And in order to have conditional use approval, the applicant has to submit proofs which were submitted as part of this hearing this evening. They that they meet the conditions required by the ordinance. In the event that the conditions are met, the applicant believes it's entitled to have their request approved. The only evidence that we've received tonight is that the that they intend to meet the conditions of the ordinance. And the resolution which Ms. Cummings made a motion to approve contains conditions requiring that all those conditions of the ordinance be met. That's one of the conditions of this approval as well. I mean, I provided a copy of the ordinance to the board. The other requirements are, one, that they commit comply with the requirements of the ordinance. Two, they comply with the engineer's review letter. Three, that if any variances are needed, they must obtain them. That they have to obtain preliminary and final land development approval. That they have to finalize plans and funding for necessary sewer system improvements. That they have to obtain all other necessary permits and approvals, such as PennDOT and other permits required by the county. That all fees and escrows be timely paid. And that they have required to submit a financial impact statement. So they're the eight requirements of the resolution.
Okay.
And those conditions are acceptable to the applicant. Mr. Dillanage chaired that draft resolution, as he typically does, in advance for us to review and comment. And those conditions would be acceptable to the applicant.
Okay. Well, if it's up to me at this point, I would have to say no.
Well, hold on.
This isn't a vote.
Go ahead.
This is not a vote yet?
We're just asking for, would anyone like to second Ms. Cummings' motion for the conditional use approval at the apartment building at 1834 Brownsville?
Okay.
So Frank, once again, this doesn't obligate us in any way to the project, correct?
No, it means that they they can proceed with land development. They still have to go through these other steps. And that's why I started this hearing and repeated it again. Is a conditional use is something that's permitted by ordinance if they meet the requirements of the ordinance. It's, I don't know if some of you are familiar with knowing hearing boards. You have variances, which are something you're not entitled to. And you have special exceptions which you are entitled to in the event that you meet certain conditions. This is similar to a special exception. And that is, if you meet the conditions of the ordinance, you're entitled to the relief which you're requesting. So and that's why, even though you're that's why this resolution is formatted the way it is. We're approving the use because, in your opinion, they've met their proof or they haven't. And if they've met their proof, you're approving it, however, subject to them meeting all the other conditions of your other ordinances. That is, land development, sewer, drainage, all the stuff, the traffic, all the stuff that we talked about are all part of land development, but not part of conditional use.
Right, okay. All right, then I'll second that, Ray.
Okay, there's a motion made by Ms. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Koutziradis. We'll do a roll call vote then. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Mr. Koutziradis?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
No.
And Ray Weldy? I vote no, and I vote no for a number of reasons. I'm not in favor of building 69 apartments, first of all, just to help the township pay for a sewer upgrade. I don't think that that's a fair trade off for the residents that live there. There's our planning commission voted two to four against this. Four voted not to recommend it to the Board of Supervisors for conditional use, and two did. And the planning commission, I believe, knows more about zoning and those issues than I do. We've tried to clean up the town center and get things going down there with a previous apartment complex, a Trivo Shoes. I don't know what's going on with that complex, and it's only six or seven units. And also with a car museum where United Auto used to be. And that doesn't seem to be doing anything. We've tried a crosswalk issue down there to get residents safely from Lower Southampton side to Ben Salem side. We don't seem to get any cooperation from Ben Salem or PennDOT on the crosswalk that we want to put in. So I believe all of those obstacles and what we've tried in the past don't warrant a 69 or 72 unit apartment complex going into that address. That's why I voted no. But the motion.
Right. Well, one quick thing too, Ray, if you don't mind me saying. I did speak to Mike, our zoning officer earlier today. And I wasn't necessarily happy with the 72 units either. But Mike had said, just so you know, that we don't have to give the okay for 72 or 69 apartments. It's just the fact that this is a, you know, that can be fine tuned. The number and other things can be fine tuned. So, you know, no, obviously, you know, I would like a little more green space too. But these are all things that maybe we can work with the builder about. So that concern was also a concern of mine. But according to Mike, that's something that we can work on if this should go further, just so you're aware of that, too.
Yeah.
That would be when the applicant, that conversation would be appropriate with the applicant. That's what I was getting at with that.
Right.
If you're gonna have conversations like that to make adjustments, that's when we would talk to Perducci and Ed and Frank and try to see, you know, to get other things in there. That's why we had to keep these two things separate.
Right.
And I appreciate your clarification. I appreciate your clarification on that. But I still have to, I wonder why our own planning commission would even approve it to send it to us for conditional use. And that weighs into my no vote, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
No problem.
Well, I have something to say. I as well have concerns. But it was outlined by Frank exactly what we were voting on, which is it is zoned for apartments. And it met, they met the criteria for conditional use. Now, and that's why I voted yes. Now, are there issues? Yes. Are there concerns? Yes. But for the for the very limited vote tonight was just for conditional use. And I just want to make that clear, why I voted yes. It's very laser focused with this.
Right.
Well, my concern is that we don't really have a plan for that area. And until we do something, and I know we talked to Mike a little bit about it, to see if we can come up with some plans that make that place look better. And I know we have Ben Salem to worry about because they didn't, they didn't come up with anything when we were trying to do this probably four or five years ago. Because we had all the businesses there. And three quarters of those businesses are gone now. So, you know, we got to start over from scratch, as far as I could see.
To me, this seems like we are starting from scratch. It's got, you've got to start somewhere.
I know we do, but let's come a plan. Let's get up with a plan.
You should have brought the plan up earlier, Ed, not tonight. We should have been speaking about this earlier. And I actually do think there's a plan, too, in place.
This is a good start to a plan.
I think we ought to find it.
Well, the motions, the motion's been passed with a vote of three, four, and two against to approve the conditional use for the apartment building at 1834 Brownsville Road.
I just want to say to the residents, I heard your comments, and I take them seriously. And I have concerns as well. And again, it was just a vote on conditional use. It was very laser focused, and I just want that clear. Even though it's been mentioned many times tonight, I just felt like I needed to mention it again. So there's no miscommunication, what we were voting on tonight.
Fine.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Giannetti, and everyone else that testified on behalf of the applicant for this. We're ready now to move on to item number four, which would be consideration of the lease renewal for Love Grows.
Good evening, Chair. This is Matt Gilbert. Just wanted to check on a few other invited guests to this agenda item. I had invited the folks from Love Grows, Rose McMenamin, Jim Cates. And then we have a public comment.
Thank you.
All right, she Love Grows is in. Jim and Rose?
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
How's it going all?
Hello.
She Rose is up. Do you want to say something first, Rose?
All right, great. There's Jim.
Yes, hi. My thoughts on this are basically, we had yeah, we had some of the board members up to take a walk through Love Grows. And they heard this before, but for the sake of whoever wasn't there, the use of the farm, it is Play Wiki Farm Park. And the board has always tried to keep the appearance of a farm. In our master plan, we have an area designated for the farm, Homestead area. We put out the, we have all kinds of instruments. In the past, we've actually, we had a pumpkin patch that we used to grow pumpkins for the kids, to have the kids involved in some kind of agricultural process at the farm. We also had talked about the possibility of getting a chicken coop and having some chickens that maybe the guy living in the house would take care of. And just so that people would see public. Well, when we had, when we were fortunate enough to get Lowe's Grove there, they're actually showing what agriculture is about. And as a bonus, we actually got some more chickens for people to see, you know, part of what normally exists on a farm. So we're definitely in favor of keeping them there. I know there are some concerns about the aesthetics, and they're legitimate concerns. Hopefully, Love Grows can can address those aesthetic concerns if we renew the lease. So that's pretty much what I have to say. If anybody has any questions, I'll be here.
No, thank you, Jimmy. I wanted to start this agenda item topic discussion with a really nice public comment that was submitted by Kathy Snyder. She's a representative from the Rolling Harvest Organization, which is right here in Bucks County. Dear Township Supervisors, we are speaking today on behalf of the Love Grows and Rolling Harvest Food Rescue Long Term Partnership with their dedication. Somebody, somebody else on there?
Please mute your microphone, you are not speaking.
All right, I will. Okay, I'll start. Dear Township Supervisors, we are speaking today on behalf of the Love Grows Farm and the Rolling Harvest Food Rescue Long Term Partnership with their dedicated growers. And hope this is helpful for your decision to confirm their land lease being renewed and available for them for years to come, enabling their continued mission and benefits to the community in a variety of ways. A few people know about the farmers, Eliza Coglin and Brad Barry. Social justice component, the work Love Grows Farm does with the Rolling Harvest Food Rescue. We are Bucks County's only farm-based cleaning food rescue organization with more than 43 growers and food producers to make sure that no healthy food goes to waste while so many among us are struggling to put food on the table. This includes providing more than 2,000 pounds of food. Love Grows, in this 2020 growing season alone, of their sustainable grown, healthy food to our neighbors in need of food pantries, food kitchens, and low-income senior housing. No recipient, and to recipients at community health moments. Desperately need nutrients and dense food, but are struggling near poverty experience with food insecurity. More than 60,000 Bucks County residents are struggling like never before due to the pandemic and economic downturn. Among those are 37% children and 15% seniors. This is an example of food justice and food equality at its finest. Brad and Eliza go above and beyond to do their part, taking time out of their busy days to communicate with Rolling Harvest whenever there's an opportunity for food to come our way with volunteers and harvest what is left behind in their fields. Or to pick up already harvested produce from a market later that they care deeply about making sure that nothing goes to local landfills or compost whenever possible. They welcome us warmly onto their farm and make sure that their continued commitment to be caring stewards of fertile land in Lower Southampton. It's more essential than ever for us in the community to support small farming operations that bring essential services to our community, especially in the age of COVID. When COVID hit, many among us experienced for the first time not being able to source eggs, milk, vegetables, and other essentials for our family. As a result, and maybe a silver lining of this local upheaval, so many of our constituents and are rediscovering the importance of connecting, supporting their local growers, and ensure access to healthy food, regardless of the supply chain disruptions due to COVID shutdowns. Thank you so much for this opportunity and for us to share this unfold story of healthy benefit from ensuring the ongoing operation of Love Grows Farm. And again, that's from Kathy Snyder, and she's the founder and executive director of the Rolling Harvest Food Rescue right here in Bucks County. So with that being read, I just want to turn it over to Love Grows. You guys can give a quick introduction of yourselves. I know the couple of the board members had the opportunity to meet you on site and take before. We do have some other members public joining us this evening. Just want to give us a quick overview and then maybe transition right into what your plan would be concerning some of the aesthetics.
Sure. So my name is Brad Barry and
I'm Elsa.
And we are the whole, we're all of Love Grows. And basically, we're a diversified vegetable operation. Growing this year solely at Play Wiki Farm. And we had all but, I think, Kim out to the farm to just kind of walk the farm and see what we do and what we grow and what it looks like.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that about right?
Yeah, sounds good to me. I know one of the things that was discussed both in previous meetings and also while we were on the site, that it's, were some of the concerns related to the aesthetics nearby the Bridgetown Pike, sort of the entranceway to your leased area. Is that a little to that and kind of what you guys would be able to do to improve that area and satisfy the board's concerns as, you know, not only themselves, but other residents drive through that way?
Sure.
Sure. Um, yeah, as we discussed when we had those little walkthroughs, we have plans to just basically grow things along the fence line for about 100 feet or so, kind of on either side and in front of the shipping containers to obscure them from the road so that we can keep our equipment and operations, you know, sort of out of sight, both for our security and just to make it look nice while driving down Bridgetown Pike or walking along the, walking along the park. So we can, we can grow a number of things throughout the growing season. And we're looking into more. We're hoping to plant some, some longer term kind of arboretum to see if we can, if we can really block out that stuff. Another thing is that we, we got there in January. So, you know, a lot of the work that we, that we meant to do kind of got held up by winter and then not getting water on until June. And the growing season gets really intense, starting in about late April or May. And so the high tunnel didn't get finished. And that's where a lot of the stuff that you kind of see out front of, you know, in that front area would go under. So once that tunnel is finished, a lot of that clutter is going to go away, go under there. We really want to make it look nice, too. Because it's just make it a nice place for us to work and for the residents to see.
Any questions?
I was wondering, this is Ray Weldy. We were out there on the 28th, Ed, and I'd walked through. And we were wondering what kind of commitment you were looking for from the township as far as the length of the, of the next lease? Would it be two years, three years, something of that matter so that you could, you know, set root there, you know, and get going with the, with the, what you have envisioned to do down there?
Sure, I mean, three, three and up is, is great. I would say no less than three would be, would be ideal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Was there a question from the board concerning the aesthetics plan? I know everyone had a kind of tidbits of ideas. And we're all great ideas, but I just want to make sure that what they're planning on moving forward with is something that satisfies the entire board and the farm foundation.
Yeah, I guess I was one of the guys that said, you know, we'd like to get some aesthetics better with the trucking that's all there and so on. And I think they're very cooperative to do whatever we think is right. But the, make it look better, I'd like to see those. And you've already said that you can cover those trucks up. So that would be good.
I think it would benefit both from the township's perspective and ours, as Elsa said, just the more obscured things are out of sight, out of mind, kind of a thing. And as Matt said earlier, we've had a lot, he's seen increase public on the parks and just utilizing the parks. And this is our first season, so we don't have a frame of reference. But as far as what normal use is, but we know we have a lot of folks that do come up to check out chickens. But even like just today, even on a rainy day, I saw two families come by just to, just to look at the vegetables. They're not as fun as chickens, but they still, they still catch the eye.
Well, I also had a concern about the aesthetics. And you two were very accommodating and you, and you realize our concerns and you are willing to do what you need to do to make it look pretty.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they, from our perspective, the lease renewal, we had spoke Deb specifically about that, just the idea of planting things. Obviously, that'll be an investment on our part to buy plant material or seeds, whatever we do to obscure things. Aside from parking things behind the structures themselves, would be not necessarily contingent upon, but just to sort of see our investment through for a few years, basically.
Well, as far as the aesthetics go, I'm a big fan of the giant sunflowers myself.
Nice.
They grow pretty large. We, we had some here at my home, and it's just amazing how big those things grow.
Yeah, we did have a round of those, and they got knocked over in one of those torrential storms. So we can stake, one of our plans is to stake those down so that they don't blow over and do a couple successions and see what we can grow.
Very good.
I was also pleased when we discussed possibly, you know, post-COVID times that, that you were very open to doing something possibly with children from the schools and have, you know, come over and do some type of, you know, tours and field trips over, you know, to your location.
Yeah, that'd be super.
Your topic as of right now, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Actually, Sue, one of the most important things for the Play Wiki Farm Foundation is programs. And that's part of our mission. It's our intention to bring about the programs for the children. And they'll be timed, they'll be part of our calendar, and we'll certainly work it out with Love Grows.
Thanks, Rose.
Thanks, Rose.
Hey, Rose, can I ask you a question?
Surely.
It's Ray Weldy. There's been talk, you know, in previous meetings about the lease rate per year. And the lease rate for the past year or two has been $1,000 per year. And then, you know, there was some thought that maybe it would help the farm committee by asking for more money per year. And the farm committee has weighed in on their opinion on, you know, what they think of the current lease rate. Could you let the board and everyone else know what the farm committee's opinion is of the proposed or the past lease rate, maybe a future lease rate?
Surely, we would like to remain with what we already have, the $1,000, simply because that's what we want. We talked that from the very beginning, beginning. And it certainly fits into the pricing that Matt Gilbert looked into regarding farmland rental. So we would like to stay with that because the most important thing of all of this, you know, and having them at the farm, which is so good for the community. But it also brings something more to us for our programs and everything. So that's very worthy for us. So, and it's very important to us because it's part of our mission. So we would like to stay with the $1,000. I talked to the board members, they're very understanding of that. We raise money, we have our events, so we're okay. And we're very happy with the $1,000.
Thank you. And I think the Love Grows reps, at least the day we were there, didn't you mention to us that this year you would be lucky to break even?
Yeah, that's just right around, yeah. We don't do our numbers till January usually, but that's what it's looking like.
So you're just hoping to stay at sea level this year?
Basically, yeah. But hopefully next year, I mean, I guess that's, that's the hope of many operations. But hopefully next year we'll have a profit.
Does that include the $1,000?
Say that again?
Does that include the $1,000?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, all our expenses, all in, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And as Rose had said, that the $1,000 is a fair, it's a fair amount from everything that Matt worked, with all the prices down for us.
Right, got it, okay.
I'd like to thank you for working with Rolling Harvest. And, you know, hopefully there could be, you know, even, you know, even more that's put out into the community to let the community know about the, you know, the food insecurity within Buck County and what you're doing to help with that cause.
Absolutely. Yeah, the more, kind of the more help we get, the more time I can spend, you know, on social media, letting people know kind of what we're doing. And the way Rolling Harvest works is they, they have volunteers come help clean produce in the fields. So we have a couple of people who come from Woodland Crossing and is it, maybe some Sweetwater, too, who have come to help clean for Rolling Harvest in the field. So it's, it's kind of open to the community that way.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions from any other board members or foundation members? Is Frank still?
Matt, it's Jim Cates again. Can you hear me?
Yeah, what's up, Jim?
Yeah, well, what, you know, obviously, we, we, we like this group there. It's good for the farm. But I would like to see, as, as you move forward with the lease, is if it's three years or five years or whatever, that we put benchmarks in terms of what they're prepared to do in terms of screening for each year. I don't think it's fair to, you know, have a whole lot done the first year, but, you know, space it over time, what's doable. So that's my thoughts anyhow.
Well, Frank is still here, and Jim's the man I relied upon for the last lease since a kid from Philly knew nothing about farms. So I'd rely on Jim again to help me with that. So let's, if we can figure that out. to help me with that. So let's, if we can figure that out, we can, um, then make a recommendation or a presentation to the board to consider.
Sounds, sounds good. Uh, I'll get together with Matt and we'll get together and see if we can lay out some plans that, uh, you know, meet their needs as well as our needs. So that's great. Thank you.
Is, is that something that we would approve all at the same time, Frank? Or is this something we can do a lease renewal contingent upon the, uh, what, what Jimmy explained with those, uh, staging of the actual screening?
Now, I think it's clear to me the sentiment, well, it's not. I think the board's in favor of continuing something, but we should incorporate that into the new lease. So I, I don't, I don't think we should vote. We should get the lease done and then vote.
Can, is that something that we can do at the next meeting? Can it be done in the next two weeks or is that?
If, if the board's in favor of renewing the lease certain subject conditions, I, um, I don't think we vote on the lease tonight. You indicate that you're in favor of it. You instruct your solicitor to revise the lease, discuss it with the, the tenants and, uh, one, come up with a document, we present it to you for approval.
Okay.
And we have a meet, I'm sorry, we have a meeting next week, right?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be done in a week, does it?
I'm just saying because of our Thanksgiving, I think we have a meeting next week.
I, I, I know, but I don't think that the farmers need it next week. They just need to know you're going to do it and we'll get it done in the next month and have it for everybody to review.
Okay.
I think it'd be nice if we gave them some indication that we're in favor of this thing. Uh, they get to, they gotta set some budgets up for the next year also. So, and the sooner the better for them, I think is, is very appropriate.
I haven't heard anybody say no. Is there any no's out there?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, we'll work, we'll work on it and get it done.
All right. Great. Thanks, Frank. And I'll stay in touch with Tina how we put this on future agenda and we'll make sure that everything gets worked out with the word. Great. Thank you. Thanks, Love Grows. Thanks, Rose.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bye bye.
Bye.
Thank you, Matt. And Rose. And Jim Cates. Next up on the agenda is item five, award bids for the vehicles sold on municipal, municipal bid. I believe there are several bids that have been submitted to the township that are being, um, proposed for approval. And then one vehicle that we didn't receive a bid on, so I'll turn it over to Mr. McDonald.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Uh, so you all gave approval to list the seven vehicles on municipal bids. So we went through the, the whole process. So what I'd like tonight is approval to sell six of the vehicles to the highest bidder. Would you like me to go through them? The six?
Uh, I don't, I mean, it's on the list you gave us, but if you'd like to.
That's, if you have the list, you can see them. I know it's pretty late, but there's the six, the six of them, it's, it's eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand five hundred and one dollars more than, than we asked for the six.
Right.
It's, uh, we did pretty well. And the one that.
What's the total number, Mark?
I didn't even, I'm sorry. I didn't, uh, I didn't do the total number. I'm sorry. I did the total number. I did the total. We got the total number that we, over was eleven thousand five hundred and one dollars.
The total, total amount received, the total amount is forty eight thousand five hundred and one dollars.
Thank you, Joe.
Which is eleven, eleven thousand five hundred and one dollars over what we.
So I, I think you could make a motion to approve the sale to the highest bidder on, of the vehicles listed on the memo for Mark dated October 20th, 2020.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the sale of the six vehicles listed on the memo from Mr. McDonald to the highest bidder as listed on municipal bid from, uh, Mr. McDonald on October 20th, 2020 from the memo we received?
I'll make that motion.
Motion be made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Uh, Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
And thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. That motion passes with a vote of five zero. Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Thank you. These people want to pick these up very shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda is consideration of resolution 2020 dash 34, authorizing application to the 2020 Pico Green Region Open Space Program for the tree replanting project. Joe would, or was it Matt that would go over a brief summary of this?
Ray, before we jump into the agenda, item six, it'll end up being Matt on that one, but, um, with regard to the forty eight thousand five hundred and one dollars, um, what we, what we've done as far as the money that would be coming in, um, the public works department under Mark, they're looking for, uh, the purchase of, uh, a brand new, um, basically it's a tire clip for, uh, for the mechanic with pull off the tires and insert the tires much easier for, uh, for, um, Gary to handle. It's a, it's a, a CoStar bid, so it's all, it's already, uh, CoStar approved vendor. The vendor is Hunter and the brand is Mohawk. Mark, can you give the dollar amount of what that purchase would be?
Yeah, that the, the, the price is twenty one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and eleven cents. This, this, this piece of equipment also has an extra large, it's called a truck cone kit. We can do the tires on a lot of the, the equipment, our long cutting equipment, tractors we have, the loaders of Paco, the large trucks where we used to have to send those, that stuff out. So it'll be a cost savings for that. And with this automatic swing arm, Gary, uh, uh, doesn't have to lift the tires up. So it'll save some back injuries.
So it, it's basically a wash. We're getting forty eight thousand five hundred and one worth spending for this small, uh, full capital asset. Um, and basically it'll be, it'll be helping all public works, the sewer, as well as the police department with regard to the tires and also of course helping Gary as the mechanic. So I think, I think it's a win-win and it's basically cost neutral. We're using the proceeds from these assets to pay for that. So, uh, just wanted to give you a heads up. I don't think we need a motion to approve that. It is a CoStar vendor, but we would, we would be procuring that in the near future and you would be seeing that in the payable match. Okay. And we could go to item six?
Thank you, Joe. Sure.
Next.
Yep. Uh, so this is the, uh, 2020 Pico Green Region Open Space Program. Uh, this is a grant that we have applied for before. Unfortunately, in recent years, we've, we have not received this grant. Uh, the formality of the, uh, resolution before you tonight is to acknowledge the matching funds from the board of supervisors. We've had to, uh, remove several hazard trees from throughout the parks and the open space system here in Lower Southampton Township. Some related to just age, others related to the ash bore, others storm damage. Um, the grant that we will be applying for, uh, with the approval of the board would be a total of six thousand dollar grant with a three thousand dollar matching component from the board. Um, to hope to be awarded, uh, I believe they're awarded in January and we could be planning as early as, uh, April timeframe.
And, and this is budgeted for?
Correct. This is also an item that we do have a budget.
Okay. So we put up three thousand and then they would match the three thousand or were they? Okay.
So the total grant is for six thousand dollars with three thousand of the board's matching.
And we would, if the, if the, unless the board has any questions, then we would need a motion to do that, correct?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Does the board have any questions about, uh, applying for this grant with the matching funds?
Don't even take the money.
There doesn't appear to be any questions. So, um, we would be, we'd need a motion then to authorize Mr. Gilbert to apply for the matching funds grant through the Pico, uh, Green Region Open Space Program in the amount of, of six thousand dollar grant. Is there a motion to authorize that application? Made by Mr. Kutsaratus? Pardon me?
The motion would be for resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty dash thirty four, authorizing the application uh, to the green, Pico Green Region Open Space Program for that matching grant. Would anyone like to make that motion? Mr. Kutsaratus has made the motion. A second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Thank you. Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. So resolution 2020 dash thirty four passes with a vote of five zero.
Thank you very much. I'll have that submitted in the morning.
Thank you. Next up, uh, Mr. Galdo, Joe Galdo, manager's report?
Sure. Um, basically, uh, as we're moving to get some progress in the old court building, that one of the things that we want to take care of first and foremost is the roofing aspect, uh, before we get to the inside. So, uh, I, I had Mark go out, basically get three, uh, three quotes and you got three quotes, one from Russell Roofing and Exteriors for thirty two thousand five hundred dollars. One for Mid-Atlantic Roofing and siding for twenty two thousand six hundred and Craig W. Craig for nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Craig W. Craig being the lowest. Mark, can you talk on the specs on the, on the job?
Yeah, uh, I've seen, I've seen quite a few jobs at the Craig W. Craig. By the way, he had mean parents giving him the same first and last name, but I, does very good work. I've seen many of his jobs, he's from Honeytaw Valley over the years and he's very reputable. And he definitely came in under the, under the other ones. And, uh, I recommend that we give him the job. And all three bids, all three bids were apples to apples.
Mark, could you read the spec when he wrote on the quote for the board to know?
You want to see the specs, Joe? Is that what it is?
Yeah, if you can read them all so the board is aware.
Uh, roof insulation on the core, of core building. Tarp grounds were debris to fall. Tear off existing roof on entire building, which is approximately forty six hundred square feet. Supply and install water and ice barrier or gutter areas and valleys. Supply and install thirty pound felt paper on the remainder of the roof. Supply and install thirty year GAF timber line HD shingles colored to be picked by customer. Supply and install three and a half inch white edge metal on the gable ends. Supply and install new vent collars. Supply and install new roll ridge vent at the peak of the building. Caul conceal any needed areas. Remove all work related debris and any rod of plywood that has to be replaced will have to be done at two dollars and fifty cents per square foot. But it doesn't appear that there's much rod of plywood or up there. The sub, the sub roof, uh, seems like it's in pretty good shape. And there's a ten year, uh, warranty on the workmanship and a thirty year warranty on the, the manufacturer for the, manufacturer, I'm sorry, for the shingles. Okay? So.
Mark, head or, head or our soffits and our capping look? That would be the time to address it while they're, while they're there.
That, that doesn't look too bad, but I have, when this is done, we'll have to, I'll get some prices and get some new gutters on there. Uh, if we're gonna have to do anything with that, that'll be at that time. We have to do the roof first.
All right. But the soffits and the capping and all that's good though?
It, I, it didn't look bad to me. I was not, I was not personally up on the ladder on there, but.
All right. Very good.
But when we do the gutters, if there anything that, in that, anything like that, we'll address it.
Yeah, on the fascia board. I got it. Okay. Very good.
All right. Thank you.
So, so before a motion to approve this, so, um, Mark could, uh, get that going over there?
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the lowest bid for, uh, replacing the roof on the district court building, um, at the township complex?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Shannon, a second? Was that Ms. Kaplan? Okay. Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Uh, we'll go down the line. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Weldy, I vote yes. A motion to replace the roof passes with a vote of five zero. Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Thank, thank you for the, the appreciation, I mean, the approval of the particular, uh, project. Um, it'll help us get underway and what we want to do inside the building. So I think, yeah, taking care of the roof is a big issue first. All right. The next issue up is dealing with, um, became aware of a new program that the county will be running, uh, coming out of Bucks County Department of Housing. It's basically a grant program. Yes. I wanted to make sure the residents are aware. We'll have it up on our website and most likely on the TV channel. Their program will help out for paying for delinquent mortgages for qualified individuals and families in Bucks County who have experienced reduced income as a result of the COVID pandemic. Uh, basically they could go to the website, www.credicounselmentcenter.org. And basically they're taking appointments, like info@creditcounselmentcenter.org or with the phone number of two one five three four eight eight thousand three. So, uh, basically it's a new program that they're rolling out and so that hopefully maybe this could help residents that are having some difficult financial difficulties right now and give them a little bit of protection hopefully. I just wanted to bring that up to the board and to the revenue. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Anything else, Joe?
That's it, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, supervisors comments? Uh, so we'll go down the line. Uh, Ms. Cummings?
Okay. Well, we had lots that went on this evening, but, um, highlights, um, glad to see the Love Grows is gonna continue here in the community. Um, had a chance to go out as I mentioned last meeting. Um, you know, I think they really addressed all our concerns and, um, so we're, I'm glad to see them continue, um, you know, being here in Lower Southampton. I was so happy to see the results of the pumpkin painting contest. They were all great. As Ray had said, boy, we had a lot of Picasso's and, and that group. So congratulations to all the, you know, the children and the community that took part in that event. That was wonderful. Um, there was, um, there was an event that, um, just was last weekend. I just wanted to highlight if anyone, uh, had, you know, did, um, partake in that. Our DA, Mr. Weintraub did the, um, National, um, Prescription Drug Take Back Day. And he had to be, he was a drive through this time. If anyone didn't get a chance to participate in that, you can still always drop off the, um, the prescription at the local, um, police station. Now please remove any personal information, um, from the bottles. I thank Mr. Kutsaratus and all that helped, including Matt, Grounds, everyone, uh, from the community that came out and volunteered to help, um, Mr. Kutsaratus with his Back to Blue. It was a great time. Hopefully, um, we'll get that to be a annual event. We have a couple of big days coming up. We have Halloween. So when everybody is out, um, trick or treating, everyone be safe and, um, you know, have a great evening doing that this weekend. And of course Tuesday, um, and I'm sure no one will forget, but, um, we'll see everybody at the polls on Tuesday. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yeah. Uh, well, you know, I'm gonna start off with what I always start off with this time of year, which is, you know, this is the time of year that you see a lot of deer running around. It's called the rut. So, uh, please be careful, be, be very wary along the roadways. Because, uh, you know, this time of year they're out chasing the does, getting a little stupid and you'll be seeing a lot of, uh, a lot of deer hit by cars. So please be a little more aware of that. Also, boy, what a great event that Back to Blue was. I was, uh, I was so pleasantly surprised. It was a multi township Back to Blue event. It was massive in size and considering that there was another huge rally going on that same day. I was amazed with all the motorcyclists. We had over three hundred motorcyclists show up to, to show their support for the men and women that protect us every day. We had over four hundred and fifty people at Russell Elliott Park. You know, I know I had thanked everybody that day. There was a few people that I, I, I missed and I apologized. When we had met over at the Ben Salem Township Police Department, Father Mike from Assumption Church just did a terrific, terrific prayer to keep the, uh, the motorcyclist safe, longer travels. So I want to thank Father Mike. Uh, also the, uh, the mayor, Mayor DeJoralamo was also there speaking at the EPD. I wanted to thank him. Lieutenant Bush and all the police officers involved from Ben Salem to Middletown. to Middletown to, I believe we had officers from Upper Morrowan, Pendell. You know, the chief would probably know. It was just, it was just a terrific event, terrific showing. I want to thank everybody again and it, it made it all worthwhile when I had police officers come up to me who I didn't even know. And they, they, they thanked me for, for all the kind words. Everybody had said that they really appreciated it. You know, the theme that day was when you see a cop, you know, you thank them for what they do. With the events that have been happening in this country over the past year, it's just horrific how, how, you know, some of these police and, you know, throughout the country can just be lumped together and, and just, you know, physically and verbally beat up. It's just not right. These are the women that put their lives on the line every day for us. And once again, I want to thank everybody, everybody who protects us. I want to thank Matt Gilbert once again. He was a terrific help with the whole thing and, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. Uh, Mr. Shannon?
Right there. Um, yeah, just a couple of things. Um, the farm, I, I'm glad the, the young, the young couple is, uh, gonna be having another distance, uh, timeframe to hold on to the, to the farm. They certainly are honest and straightforward people. Um, we look forward to a plan for Trevo's possibly. Um, try talking to Mike, uh, and see what we can work out and what we can find from the, what's been done in the past. Um, the ten seventeen, uh, motorcycle, uh, for the cops was a good job. Kim and Matt did a great job on that whole thing, even though I wasn't allowed to, I couldn't be there. Uh, they did a nice job. And hap, happy Halloween to everybody and hope the kids get all the candy they can get. Thanks.
Thank you, Ed. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes, um, I too am happy to see that Love Grows, um, will be, can, more than likely be continuing at Play Wiki Farm. And, um, everyone's happy that they're there. Play Wiki Farm Foundation's happy they're there, supervisors. So it's, it's a, it's a, I'm, I'm pleased that it's working out for them. Also, I want to, I love the idea of the, the pumpkin contest. That was awesome and creative. And hopefully I would like to see that continue if it's possible because it's looked like you got, had quite a few, um, children participate and congrats to the winners. So that was a great idea, Matt. Really liked it. So, um, congratulations for that. And also, um, I want to say that I had a good time at the Back to Blue event. And I want to thank all the motorcyclists that did show up. Without them, we wouldn't have had a, um, motorcycle rally. It wouldn't have happened. So, um, thank you all for all of them for being there. It was quite a sight. It really was. And also I would just like to say thank you for tuning in and have a safe Halloween. However you celebrate it this year, it's probably different than in the past. But, um, enjoy yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. I only have, uh, two things. Uh, the first is the Lower Southampton Veterans Advisory Council will hold a Veterans Day Ceremony, which will be Wednesday, November eleventh at four thirty PM at the Lower Southampton Township Building up front by the flagpole. Uh, the Lower Southampton Police Honor Guard will be there to present the colors, um, the national anthem and a short ceremony honoring the great men and women who have, uh, served our country. And, uh, also please be careful on Saturday evening. It's Saturday night, Halloween. There's little kids on the street. It's getting dark earlier and, uh, we want to, we certainly don't want anyone to get hurt and to go out and have a good time. Um, so I'd like to thank everyone for tuning in. It's late. Um, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Great. Question, what, what time was that VAC?
Four thirty PM on Veterans Day, November eleventh.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Was a motion to adjourn made by Ms. Coming, or Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn's been made by Ms. Kaplan, a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Cummings, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kuciratis?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for everyone for tuning in and have a great evening.
Bye, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.